Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 5th. It is 6:03 PM. And we're going to have a work session. We're going to stand to the pledge of allegiance to get the meeting started. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the public in which you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're going to have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here in Rock. Thank you. Ms. Tracy Edwards, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Trustee McGuire. Trustee Beck, present.
Okay. So, we have a few things on old business and a few things on what our audience will probably discuss. The first one is an old sore subject, electronic time bars. That's probably still a little bit late. If I know anything, we're going to... We need, I want, we need, we need, I know what it was. We need some help to do that, correct, Tracy?
Yeah, I still haven't been able to get a meeting together yet with Pecor representative. I was supposed to say, well, last month. I've been trying to play catch-up. But Chief Will Cox and I are going to try to get a meeting, hopefully this month. With 59 and me being busy, I think we may be a little pre-made this month.
Okay. We had, there was communication with the fire department on the service contract, that Lucas III device. I saw an email fly. Does anybody, we need to discuss that for any reason? Everybody good with that?
It's, I mean, I just understand that there was a device that was given to us, right? And that we bought a five-year plan. What kind of plan was it?
It's a warranty plan.
Okay. But I, my problem is, I don't have it with me. I wish I did. But it said, it looked like it was only four years.
Four, so you have additional years.
Or not.
Yeah, four additional years. You got one year free, then you got four additional years.
Oh, okay.
So it takes us out five years.
Okay.
It, doesn't, I think these batteries, right? Isn't it the batteries that expensive all that? Do we guess?
They're three hundred dollars a piece, I believe she said.
Yeah.
And that includes for the state warranty, the maintenance contract.
Yeah, yeah.
One, two, three, four. One, three.
But it's already been used twice.
Yes, yes.
Same device.
Same one, yes. Yes, I mean, that's makes it worth every penny, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
So, I'm not questioning the price or anything. Just understand me, because I have to report this to the county. So our first payment is not till 23, January of '23.
Yes.
I mean, this has got to be put in our budget. For that next.
For January of '23.
For, when we do the budget this year, the budget is '23 and beyond. It's one payment, it looks like.
One payment a year?
Yes. Well, that's what most of our vehicles are, one payment a year. But I think it's two.
Paying that January 1st, we're going to have to put that in this year's budget, is what she's saying, right? Do you understand that sort of money's there? Yeah. So I'm sure you've got the money.
Well, if you for next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Next year's budget.
With the first annual payment on 1300. So the first payment was rounded, was it rounded up or was 1300? It says the first annual payment of 1300 being due upon expiration of the manufacturer one-year warranty. But then, but in here it says the payment's 12 something. Then it just rounded up? I'm confused. That's why I'm confused. The first year is free, so this year right now we're in is the free year.
Yeah.
We got a last year. This is the free year, and it's 1300 for this year, but we don't have to pay for that. After that, it's 127670.
Yes.
For the next four years.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Tracy, can you do my favorite? Do you have any of that electronic? Just so you can send it to me, so I can make sure I have it put up, so I can ensure that it's in the 2023 budget.
This electronic?
Yeah, whatever, so I can make sure that that money is put up for the 2023 budget.
You say you want me to send you a copy?
Please, thank you.
Okay, so the next thing is kind of just opening up the formality of how we're going to do something. We have been dinged the past several years in not being transparent with residents. You have to produce minutes for every meeting we have. And like tonight, we have, the past couple of meetings, we're going to approve, we made, you know, a short version of them. But the previous administration had 2021, it had to be done word for word. So we finally, we used the same company, we did it in 2020. And they have produced a word-by-word transcription. It's 53, 54 hours with the minutes. And by the way, Tracy, do you need a physical hard copy of that for your files? I kind of asked you that in the email. Do you need, do we need to produce a hard copy of that for the auditors when they come in? Do you need paper of that?
Of, of what you just said in that, or?
Of all those, of all those minutes, of 50, 54 meetings?
No, they're, they're.
Yes.
No, I already downloaded them. I already put them on flash drive.
Okay, I saw you, you don't need that, as I was saying.
So, no, I can send, if they need it ahead of time, I can send it. And they usually ask me, and I usually hand them, I get everything ready for them, I usually hand them a flash drive, and then they do whatever they want to do.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I, I was going to farm that out. If we need, because of all that pages, it was nice to give that to some printing company, let them print it if you needed it, if you don't need it. But anyway, the one thing I'm trying to stress here, guys, is that those minutes, although they are, we're going to approve, well, I hope we approve them, and they are a legal document. At all times, and in the resolution that we're going to bring up tonight, if we're, we're, this particular meeting, it's being discussed, and it has to go to court, or somebody's really getting, you know, asking questions about it about the minutes, the audio recording is the official backup, the official document of what was said. Partly the problem we had last year was when, beginning, we had Zoom meetings, and if you guys remember that, we'd do the Zoom meetings, and time and time again, it was hard to hear each other. There was times we had your mask on your face, and we had audio, and people had audio problems, recording, and we'd have to go to their computer and get, try to change things, and... And so maybe, we had paid a little extra for them to do the recording because of the inaudibility of it. So I just want to stress the fact that that audio recording is the definite legal backup. If, if this has to go to court, if there's questions about what is in print, in the resolution, it states that audio recording is the official backup. So that's all, that's all I ask. And we have questions about, what we're talking about, is there any questions?
So, for, and these are all for 2021?
Correct.
And is that like January through December?
Yes.
Of 2021?
Every meeting. We did not have, and you look at that, there's no January, I don't know what the, the first meeting was canceled back in the day.
Okay, okay, but just pretty much it covers all of 2021?
Yes.
And you're saying that the process will be changed to any legal document will be used, we will be using the verbal or the audio?
Yes.
Instead of using the specific word on word?
Correct, correct. Nobody in, nobody in the state of Ohio uses the word on word. We've had that argument before. And everybody else uses a short version of what we're doing today. And you have, if it goes to court, they listen to the audio. Everybody else does that already.
So, show the outline. So basically, it'll be the agenda, an outline of what was stated, and then the audio for backup or the.
Correct.
Correct?
Okay, Tracy, I do have another question for you, and, you know, probably, I should know this as a trustee, but... So we have, and let me know, that we paid for that with a credit card, and we have credit. And I did not take that credit, did not go back to me. We have $41 of credit or something with these transcripts. Either, are there any meetings, be it, be it through Zoom, did the... Did somebody else have a meeting that we did not make transcripts of, that we need to?
I don't know if the zoning had a meeting, because they didn't give me a copy. They didn't give me a copy of, of the meeting. They did have a meeting, let me take that back. They did have a meeting, but I didn't get the copy of.
So we need to dig into files and see if we can find that someplace. Because they're going to be digging. I do, I'm really making an effort not to get dinged at the audit for things we've got dinged in the past. I want to make sure that we're up to date on all our minutes, and I'm proud of meeting.
I would think that all the trustees would have it at that meeting, right? Or do you have to get the zoning, no?
No, you don't. No.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Unless during this meeting, right? So they have one or two during the meeting?
Yes.
And one of them, yeah.
Yeah, that was on there. That, that, that was on there.
Yeah, that was the one during election day, I think.
Something like that.
Do we have a calendar of the zoning meetings for 2021?
But they said one of them was canceled. They, they make a calendar, but then they cancel them because they don't have anything to do with that.
Okay, okay.
So there is one in, in the, you know, in the general resolutions, but probably most of them weren't. I have.
Okay. Anyway, we have a little bit, if we do find a possible one, we have a credit with them, then we can have some more done. Any other questions? The next one is garage doors and openers. Mr. Greg, Assistant Chief, where do we, do we have final bits on that?
No, it's, I just put on here.
You can do this.
I have plenty of papers, so.
I spoke to all of them today. Most everybody says, you know, this price is good for X numbers of days. They said they were, the prices were good. They've had no increases since, and so they're all on. So two different packets there. One, Station 59, and the other one, the Quansah out there, Union Road, Road Yard, Road Department Yard.
And Station 60 doesn't need any more? 60?
No. These are, these are all the one packets for Station 59. Four doors, thirty in front, one back.
I'm sorry, I thought we were just looking at Station 59 because the door, you have to get out of the car, literally, to get in and out. I thought we were just looking at Station 59. I didn't know we were looking at other, or this year.
Well, one's the road department. That's, he asked me to contact him to come back for the road department.
Because, because they were coming to town.
Okay, so this is for the road department?
Yes.
One is, yes, for Station 59.
And I will talk about that. So would you be able to, your comment, I had commented that too.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was going to be for.
At the heading here, it gives address on Union.
Okay.
And on Dick delivery.
Mm-hmm.
Top.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, so, thank you, guys. I appreciate you doing that, and appreciate taking your time and doing our road work for that. So on the road department, I do want to proceed with that ASAP. I'd like to be able to call them up and tell them, but see, that building is absolutely useless to us right now. The door that's on there, correct?
Correct.
Is nailed shut.
It's nailed to the front.
We have a band door that's all used up. We have that big building in there, and that's where we work on the dump trucks. That's where we work on the bathroom. That's where we work on our equipment. We want to work on ourselves, ourselves, in-house, and we will be doing that. So this door needs to be put on, and install price of 1660, and some openers? Uh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
Three thousand?
$3,000. Even if it's, it's under $5,000, we have that in the road budget. That means I won't, I won't have the ability, I'd like to make a motion in the very beginning to go ahead and get, and give them okay to get this, to install this.
So what's the structure integrity of that?
I'm sorry?
What's how the building, I know one time you said it leaked.
It has a couple of drips in it. I don't care.
Yeah, but the, but the structure is.
The structure's falling. So, what, what, my intentions are, okay, I'm glad you brought that up, because my, so my, my idea there is to patch little holes, basically sprayed outside of that. I don't know what color. It seems stuff they use on the roof of a mobile, a mobile home. You know, it's kind of like a thick.
It's like rubber.
Yeah, yeah. But put that, sprayed outside, has to, I'm going to spray it outside of that even, it'll last even longer, but we have enough room to keep everything inside, and I don't like things sticking, sitting outside, you know, just let's get everything inside.
That's what, that's what's eating up the trucks, huh?
Yes.
Being outside.
Yes.
Especially for beds.
Yep, absolutely.
Have you noticed that one header on that bed?
Uh-huh, yes, yeah, that's, that's on my list to protect and replace, yes. So anyway, we'll talk about that in the meeting, but my intentions are, I'd like to make a motion to give them approval to go ahead on that, on that one. Okay.
So is there, so is there a specific one? I'm trying to look at the cost of. So it's, okay, lane overhead. Wow. Surely it's not the lane overhead. Yeah, very expensive. The labor material is $11,130. I think the very first one is the.
They do, it's 25?
I'm sorry?
They do, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the, yeah, yeah. And the first one is probably, the least is 46. I think 4610. And the second one is 4755.
They asked if we wanted insulated doors, also based on the building. I don't, I think that would be a waste.
No, no, absolutely not. Not there.
Not with air coming out of the roof, or anything like that?
No, no, I mean, yeah, when there's lube on, there's lube on the back, then we can blow it open.
Okay. So for Station 59, let's see. Says the install price is $25,020. And then it says $6,255 each.
Yeah, it's four doors.
Okay. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get it. Add it up, you know? Okay.
Wow. So this broke out because they, they said you don't have to replace all four?
No, they're just saying that each, each door has its own price and its each opener.
And so I guess what I'm asking then again, is each door need, all the doors need to be replaced, or was it just? I know you mentioned mine in the beginning, I heard you say it before, that the person has to wait back to close the door. Does that mean all the doors are the same one?
No, two of them have openers, two of them do not.
But does that mean that those two openers work, is what I'm asking?
Well, this price includes the new track.
So what's the problem with the track?
There's no problem. I mean, it's just the fact they're, they're very bad doors. Two of them are mostly glass, and they don't come down all the way, and then the, the heat loss is unbelievable on that place. But, no, it's, they, they quoted all four of them. They don't know that we do them in piecemeal. Two here, one here, one here, and end up with three, three different looking doors. I don't know.
Don't worry, I don't, I think we need to be consistent.
Yeah, I think, I think it should be all.
I don't know, it should, yeah.
So the next question?
We just have to make sure we get the money into the budget?
Is this in the budget?
No, as I said in February, I was never even made aware of this until after the budget was created.
Yeah.
This, and the other thing is quotes were sent to the township one year ago by two companies, and two years ago by one, another company, which would have been $22,000 two years ago, is now $35,000. So they sent the quotes, and nothing was ever properly through the line.
So I, I wonder though, to kind of go back, because if we can't find this money, money, all of this money in the budget, then perhaps we could look at getting the doors that we can, staying with the same banner, maybe seeing if that we can work out something to where we can get the other two doors, so that they'll be matching next year.
I can't imagine they would order them and stock them and set on money that long to get the same, same.
Right, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, I'm not saying to order them and stock them, I'm just saying that if we let them know that we will, we might have to come back and get the additional doors the next year, if we can't find the money in the budget. So we would have to first find money in the budget, if we can't find it, because it's some other things that I think might be coming up. We just first need to see if that money is there, if we can find it.
I'm pretty sure it's not there. We just created that, and there's, there's not $25, $30,000.
Okay, okay.
Trustee Lawson had an idea.
Shh, I'll wait it out, I'll wait it out.
Okay.
Just remember, the next comment. Probably will be resistance. Probably will, I mean, really say. So, anything more on garage doors?
To see whatever it is you got to say about it.
Well, it has to do a lot of things, so.
Get out here.
I'm wanting to pay for that, and maybe my garage door, my road department garage door, and other things with ARP money. It is totally legal to do that. And that money is there for us to use and to help us out. And so I want to proceed on with, what I really asked before in this meeting is questions that we want answered. So one of the questions I asked is, do we have to write a separate resolution for every time we withdraw money out of ARP? Can we say, and we're going to, we're going to set up a fund, and I want to, so I want to send an email out to, and I can't, in a legal firm, that everybody's using, the OTA, for this ARP money, and we need to start communication with them. And so they have written a template for the first resolution that we write, and how, and basically, how we're going to use this money, and we use it for operations, basic operations. So you do that one first, and can we just say, okay, so love this $600,000, we're going to take $100,000 of it now, put it in the fund. I need to ask, how can we, how do we, what's the way to do this? Do we have to write a resolution, are we going to have, every time we will spend $10,000, have a different resolution for ARP money? Could, what could we group them together? That kind of thing. But the money's there, and what Greg, the comment Greg made, so how much that went up in a year? And you're saying, when the money's not there, we can't afford it, let's just wait another year, so we can put it in next year's budget. Well, then it went from, went up to $10,000, the extra amount of dollars between now and then, everything keeps going up, and we're paying more. So let's use this money that we have, that's been given us to use, use it and buy it now, and, and make our place nicer, use this, and fully price this up again. We know we're going to have to have it. I got to have the door in a quantity, I got to use that building. We got to have the doors on 59. So let's use the money the government give, the governor, the federal government has given us, and make our, make our life better. Go through the legal process, start communication with, with those legals, and tell them we're going to open up a fund. You're just, you're being paid, when you, when you just give us a bill, you're getting paid down these same funds, which is legal.
Okay.
No, I'm done, I'm done, so, okay, talk to me.
My issue is, I don't, I don't believe in piecemeal. I believe, when we go with that, it first we need to find out what the attorneys say about that, so that we're clear across the board. Secondly, we need to develop a plan about what we want to use that money for, instead of saying, oh, well, we need these doors, let's go ahead and spend that money for these doors. We need to develop a plan, instead of like just doing things like off the top of my head. Not to say that this is not a great opportunity, but we still need to develop a plan, because there is so much need for the township, that we need to look at what's going to be priority. I mean, because, you know, over at Kemalane, the emergency system is not, does not function, and the people, I think we had a resident here last couple of meetings. No, I don't, we don't, I don't hear, we don't hear anything over there. But the resident came in and stated at a meeting, maybe last meeting or meeting before, what's going on with that, because they can't hear anything over there. So I'm just saying, that is something that is a need, you know what I'm saying? I'm not saying this is not need, but we need to sit down and write down and, and research what's priority, as opposed to saying, oh, well, we got that money, let's spend it here, let's spend it there. Because where you know it, it's gone, and you're like, well, we have so many more plans, but if we sit down and come up with some kind of a plan to use that money.
Can I say something before we get into it? First of all, we don't even know if we're going to get our second tranche. Our SAMS registration is five. So we got the first, we may not get all of our ARP money.
Hopefully we will, so, because we have to care about.
Well, we didn't take care of it.
They haven't, they haven't proved it yet, so.
So, so I'm not saying we have that money. And then there's nothing saying that didn't make any wrong decision, that we may miss out on it, I guess, or anything. Secondly, is, there's no issue with spending that money. You always talk about legal, we always talk legal, legal, legal. What you have to do is document every single thing you, this is different than care about. This money is, because it falls through the federal more, I mean, the government's federal money too, but we're working directly with the federal on these fines. And we have to make sure we document every single thing. So as far as legal, that's fine, yeah, make sure it's right. But whatever they tell you, you're going to have to make sure you document every single thing you do. I mean, have it fully documented. So, like, like Sheila said, my suggestion is to go, and we said this earlier, get a plan of what you want to do with this money, you know how much money you're doing. And I guess I'm repeating what she was saying. And then decide what prioritize. Because eventually you're going to just eat it up, and it's going to be gone. And I guess I repeated basically what she was saying. But I agree with her on that. We have to watch that money, because it can be gone faster than you know it. And it's not just there, sitting there, then, oh, we don't have money in this fund, so let's just use ARP. No.
Is that the local?
Yeah.
You have a local?
Yeah. Somebody wants to get it, they can't get it. Okay.
First goal.
I, I, yes.
So that's not like.
We need to prioritize, because we said that, we said that last week. We need, we're, we're, we keep saying that, keep saying that.
And that, no, no. It's like, and that doing it.
You have me a list, so, okay, we'll make a list.
I mean, so you suggest to do this, and then you want to vote on it, but you haven't even put it on the list yet. I'm not saying.
I need that money to, I, I, the building that the Quansah is going to get done, I might wait on the, I gotta, I gotta have that.
I understand, but I'm just saying, we got to, we got to do a list.
I was just making a comment, what you was talking about with road, with the fire department.
No, I'm not getting on you. Come on, don't be so, let me see, he's so thin-skinned, I'm not getting on you. I'm just making a suggestion of what we should do in order to stay, to be compliant.
So I think that maybe we should schedule a meeting so that we can sit down and talk about how to come up with what to do with the money. Because I think we all have an idea about some things we feel like need to be done, we just need to come together and talk about it and then prioritize what's on those lists.
I agree, I agree, we've said it several times, yep.
Yeah, we said it several times, but we didn't say we need to schedule a meeting.
I don't have an idea, I just want to make sure you comply. Whatever you do, I just want to get you compliant. So it's up to you guys, I just want to make sure you stay compliant. And I agree that we do need legal and I agree, I agree with both of us, we do need legal help, but I want you to make sure we need to document every single thing, can't be anything.
So if we can be regular media, we can go ahead and schedule something so we can have that in place. So we won't find ourselves here too late.
Are you listening, Mike?
Okay, any other business? I have a phone tag.
Not with me, I have, I have any messages for me. I called you back, that's Sunday.
Any new business? We'll be hiring a, I'm, I'm, I had an interview with, we had an applicant, we had a person hire an application for the Road Department Superintendent. And I had an interview with him. And I'm very pleased with the prospects that he's showing to give the township. And so his resolution is in the packet there.
This is not exactly what I was looking for.
I was watching, she's been voting, hiring him.
This is part of what I was looking for. But the other part of it was, I wanted to know.
Uh, no, but I will add to that, that there were other applications turned in for the administrators.
Tell me if there's any disintegration about this one. This just tells, gives me the, this doesn't tell me.
No, I'm sorry, the one that was set up.
This just tells me.
Yes, just one.
Something over there doesn't tell me.
Right, so, um, those other applications, well, no, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Two, uh, uh, two applications for the administrator. Had this submitted and then one. It was supposed to be submitted, but it doesn't tell me that yet. Then the other one, um.
But that's why I had the flowers, was said.
Oh, you know, so nothing for zoning?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um, so that's all with that.
Okay. And you have a strong resolution, a very resolution, a ticket packet, just to put on top of.